We see here, is she on, Jim? Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag, the United States of America-
And to the republic for which it stands- One nation-
Under God-
In this world-
With liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed with the election of offices, Mr. Redden will sit in for Ms. Silver.
No, you can't, you can't do that until, until we have the election.
Okay, after the election, ah, okay, thank you.
So I make to, um, make a motion to make Mr. Kozak the chairman and Mr. Sylvia the vice chair.
Second. So you're combining the two?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Frank said, second.
Did you do a roll call vote, Jim?
Somebody, I thought somebody just asked me a question.
Nope.
Instead of do a roll call?
Yeah, just a roll call.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
She's not voting.
You can't vote.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Uh, Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
And Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, people.
Right, now you can make this.
Now, I'd like to, I'd like to see Mr. Redden as a voting member, okay? So we have two preliminary reviews tonight, just to go over a little bit of what a preliminary review, how we review it is, this is a preliminary review, not a public hearing. The board will not be commenting on the merits of the application, but only on the completeness and any deficiencies to be corrected before the public meeting. Jim, would you read off the applicant's information, please?
Bill J. Anderson of 51 Pond Street requesting relief from section 15.2 lot area, uh, that's creating a lot with no road frontage, a lot in reference with Spat's map. Five block six lot six.
Would the applicant like to come up and speak, or is he a representative? I'm sure, go ahead, sir, yeah. Thank you.
I'm Mr. David Lavelle, rancher there. Steve Anderson.
Can you bring the microphone over?
Steve Anderson is assisting a variance to project on Pond Street, but he wants-
Can everybody hear him?
It doesn't sound like the mic is on.
Is this the mic spot?
By the way, everybody check yours and make sure that you're-
Yes, it's on, how's that?
Oh, that's better.
You don't have yours on.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Seeking a variance to create two lots on Pond Street, um, having 150 feet of frontage with one common driveway. You see the configuration on here of the two lots. One of them to be just over two acres, the other one to be in excess of five acres. And the reason for that is Mr. Anderson will be subdividing the rest of his property. You see on this plan, Valley Drive up above on that sketch. There will be a road coming in from Valley Drive to a cul-de-sac, approximately three quarters of the way back. I have a plan in my portfolio there that I can show you what will be happening there. He's trying to eliminate the need for bringing that road back out onto Pond Street in order, in order to access the five acre lots that's showing here. In his mind, one driveway off of Pond Street here for these two lots would be better than bringing that road around. There'll, there will be a little bit of wetland and dredging field for that road as it comes around and comes down the hill toward Pond Street. His idea is to create these two lots first, and that will give him a little bit of capital so that, um, he can construct the road up back. I'm gonna open my case and show you where that road would be.
Those are coming in from up above.
That's, 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 yeah, this is coming into this area here, right?
The two lots we're talking about-
Yeah. You don't.
So that corner, is that this?
Or is that- Yes, it is, yep.
So this lot is over here.
It's not shown on there.
It's shown on there.
So we're really not talking about this tonight?
We're not. I'm talking about-
That's right.
But I was just, that's the reason, that's the reason he wants to do this. Basically, the-
Are we creating a non, a, a lot with no way to get to it?
Mr. Chair, who needs to go back to the microphone?
Right, 'cause you've-
Sir, excuse me, sir?
Right now, this is 150 feet of frontage.
Jim, you need to get back in the microphone, sir, everybody needs to hear.
He'll ask you the question and then you can answer, 'cause everybody doesn't know what's being said.
Sorry. Mr. Gibbs?
The large parcel in the back.
The five acre lot, how do you get to it?
Off of Pond Street.
Creating two lots, it'll be a landlocked piece of land.
Here's the entrance, right here.
Yep, this is, this is the lot. The second-
There, there will be a driveway easement into that lot from Pond Street, which is a shared driveway.
Right.
It's not landlocked, it's sharing frontage with the other lot.
Okay, this five acres goes with this lot, extra lot off of Pond Street.
Correct. No, they're, they're, they're two separate lots. Five acres is, is on the driveway that goes over to the, to the right.
Why is there dotted lines across here?
Dotted lines.
There's a dotted line there separating that from that. This dotted line, what?
Well, that's the edge of the vegetation. Edge of woods.
Edge of woods.
No, the, the big-
The bold, the bold dots.
The bold lines.
Bold.
Doesn't mean on this.
Okay.
Boy, kinda screws up the plan when you're trying to read it.
So that, that was one of my concerns about looking at the plan in terms of the completeness of the applications.
Ah, may?
Mary?
Yes, call me anything, yes.
We need to have one conversation?
Okay, we're trying to make it clear over here, okay?
Who has the floor right now?
Huh?
Who has the floor to ask questions?
He's talking.
Okay.
Mr. LaValle's talking.
We ask, you have-
You, you got some questions for him?
Just what Frank said.
No, he said the plans aren't correct.
Basically, yeah.
Well, it's that, I'm sorry about that dashed line there, I, I didn't catch that.
Okay.
But it's all one, that five acre lot is all-
Okay, that makes sense now.
With the frontage there, apologize for that. And, and again, the variance is to create those two lots, one of two acres and one of five, with a shared driveway on 150 feet of frontage. And the back parcel does have frontage where Steve's house now is. So that's, that doesn't, isn't landlocked. And, uh, that won't be cut off until the, the future subdivision is done.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, Mr. LaValle, I, so this back lot that Frank is referring to, it, it's connected to this front lot. So that, and this front lot, you're trying to create a lot that has no road frontage. So you just said it has road frontage, it doesn't have road frontage.
Correct.
Steve's house has road frontage.
It has no road-
Okay, so that was incorrect, okay.
There is an easement over the lot that does have the frontage for the driveway into that-
There's an easement.
-parcel.
Oh, yeah, okay, proposed.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Hamel?
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned why you're making that second lot, the, the, the landlocked lot, why, why it narrows down so much? It's, it's in the design for the subdivision in the rear. The lots come down so far with, where that road comes off. In other words, if you will, something wrong with your family. Yeah, there are lots here, one and two. Okay, and cul-de-sac, and lots over here. So that's, that's all in the- Oh, okay.
Roger, is that it for questions?
In, in terms of the completeness of the application, I, that, that's, I think so, I don't, um, I'll have more to say when we start to talk about the, uh, the merits of the application, but-
Can I ask a question about the application?
Right.
'Cause I'm still new at this.
Yeah.
He's asking for a variance on map five block six lot six.
Right.
Because, because-
Which is the exist, so do these two not exist?
They, they do not currently exist.
They do not, exactly.
They, they, if he, if he gets the variance, he will then have to go to the planning board for a subdivision approval.
Right.
And then subdivide the plot to create those two lots.
So, we're not talking about, we're not talking about this one over here at all.
No, that's, this is where Mr. Anderson lives, this is his home.
Yeah.
Yeah, his land, yep.
Okay.
'Cause right now, that, all of this is one lot.
Right.
Yes, okay.
However, the hope is, Mr. Chair, that top part is gonna be another six or seven lots. On top of what we're looking at. Just so that you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we're talking about, just the bottom part right now.
That's, that's all we're discussing-
Right.
-tonight, that's correct.
Thank you.
Whether he'll ever come back, come back to us again on, when he goes to the planning boards, when he does the final drawings and so forth, 'cause that'll also be okay from the planning board. So, okay. If there are any other questions from the board members?
Mr. Chair, would you like to ask?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair? Can you hear me? This is Barbara.
You're, you're very, very faint.
Okay, I don't know what's going on with my thing.
If I, if I turn on my speaker, it'll-
Tell me when you can hear me.
That's good.
Yep.
Okay, all right. My question is, on the abutters list, there are many people's names, and all of those properties are not identified on this plan, I think they're across the street. And I think they should be on, I think all those abutters should be on this plan if he's showing, if he has their names on this abutters list. And I noticed that up in the top left-hand corner of sheet one of three, where, right above where it's Valley Drive, and it says map four lot five dash 11 dash 17, on the, um, abutters list, it says four five 14 17. So that maybe need to check to make sure that he has, um, contacted to correct a butter, if he has the number wrong? Does that make sense?
It makes sense. Mr. LaValle is sort of looking at his plan. If, if you come here just for a second, I'll show you. This lot, see, this one is five 14, this one's five 11.
Okay.
And, and she's, she's questioning whether that is correct.
Next.
Or you, could you go back to, could you, could you go back to the microphone?
We need a roving mic for you.
Two or three of the tax stuff available. So we can check that.
Please check that, thank you.
Because your abutters list has it as 14. You have a, a four five 14 17 on the abutters list, but on the plan, it's listed as a four five 11 17.
I would have to look at the tax map to confirm that, I don't know.
Like I said, but the, 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 the country, well, either your abutters list is wrong or your plan is wrong.
Those were-
What does the abutters list say?
The brothers list says five, I mean, four five 14 17.
What does the tax map say?
I don't have the-
We don't have the tax map, yeah.
You don't have a tax map here in your town hall?
No, but that's, that's up, that's up to you to check.
I'm hoping that the abutters list is right, if, like, uh, I don't want Steve to miss a month because we screwed up the plan.
No, I think you, you don't need to miss a month, what you need to do is to get that rectified soon enough-
Absolutely.
But before the, the, i- i- if we schedule the, the public hearing for May, as, as long as this is corrected in time to send out the, the notices for, for May. What I will do, Mr. Chairman, is fix that little line that Mr. Gibbs had a problem with. And I'm going to actually show on here the proposed future subdivision, so it's clear what's going on. And check the abutters list. Collect my plans accordingly, and I'll have them by the first of the week, at the latest, possibly tomorrow or Friday.
Jim, did you say Ms. White had another question?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Uh, actually, no, but I was just gonna make a comment from what Mr. Val, LaValle said. If we're just talking about trying to do something with, make these lots, I think it would be very confusing for the board if he filled out the whole back of it like the future, um, development's gonna be, because that's not what's before the board.
Sorry, I can't hear that from you.
Jim, I'm sorry, could you repeat what she said?
She said that the-
Just give us some of your whatever.
If they were to fill in the backland as its future development is showing, that that might be confusing for the board because that's not what the application-
Correct, yeah, I agree, yeah, yeah. But there, there's also been some comments here, and I think we'll probably have to go through that as far as the plan's not being complete, uh, you know, to show the abutters and all the surrounding properties, Pond Street and all the other areas. Is that something that we're looking for?
That, 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 that's what, uh, Ms. White was asking about. She wanted to make sure that all of the properties on the abutters list are located- Around, around, around the property, I understand, across the street as well. Yeah, yeah. I understand that. Those, those seem to be the, the, uh, the problems that we've had with the, the physical presentation of, of the plan. So the abutters know where they are in relation to the plan.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
I get that.
Are there any more questions from the, uh, members? Or do you wanna take a minute to review, um, the documents we have?
Yeah.
Trish, I'm sorry.
Just a minute, yeah, let's review.
What, 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 what's, Frank, what do you, what do you, what are your comments? He, he said he's gonna, he's gonna, he's gonna erase that line.
Yeah, but it's still only a sixty-four open, you put that in. It should be a prostitute table table. You're gonna have the same score.
Well, I, what his comment was, is because of the shape of the, what, his, his plan for subdividing that other very large area is why- Frank, it's, it's more like 80 feet. But, and there's a, a pathway through there to get to some more upland. It's actually the way that Steve used to get to the back of his property. It, it accesses the, the rest of this five acre lot. That dimension where the line isn't dashed is 69 feet, and this one is a little bit longer than that.
I wonder what it would take to put the, the road into the other house.
This line. This is, this is someone else's property.
It's, he's planning on it, the, it, it-
Over there. Well, and now we've got that hole open, going in. This, this anchorage is gonna stay the same, it's just changing the lot. I get the horn there.
I, I- I, I, I think what you would need to do i- i- is to look at the proposal that you have for the, the part that we're not looking at, to see i- if, if that is a feasible alternative. That, 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 that would- We're still maintaining the same size. Right.
Okay, and that way it makes this one more, we gotta come up that one.
I couldn't hear what Frank was saying, Ben. I couldn't hear what Frank was saying.
But, but basically what Frank was talking about over there was to, in that area where the space is very small.
Right, yeah, yeah.
To, to, to widen it out.
Do this.
Okay.
These would be equal areas, and it would leave this if they go open.
Thank you. Sorry, I couldn't quite pick up.
The lot size will stay the same.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Ms. White, do you have any more questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Any other board members have any questions? I, I guess I have one question when I look at this, and I, you know, about the, uh, the shared driveway.
Yeah, I don't-
I guess my question sounds pretty simple, it's something, I'm not a developer, to, uh, to, I guess you'd have to put a new road in or something to split these, so they each have 150 foot. How, how could that, could it happen?
He might stay there in this house, he doesn't want a road coming down, he doesn't-
Can you put this, speak to the speaker, please? Thank you.
Doesn't want a road coming down.
No.
From Pond Street. And that lot, that, on the shared driveway, there'll be, you won't even see that from Pond Street. Basically, there'd be one additional house between Steve and this from there, and that's, the whole idea is to kind of preserve what Pond Street is, separate from the subdivision it does up in the back.
So it, it's, is, is it feasible to, to, uh, to do, yes or no?
Sure.
Okay, so it is feasible to put a separate road in for the other home?
Oh, oh, to put a separate road in?
Yes.
Yes, it would, again, there would be some, uh, wetland disturbance to come down that hill and, and, and come out, but it seems unnecessary. I, I think we're starting to get into the, uh-
Yeah, the nasty side.
Right, the, the, not, not whether the application is complete, but the value of the application.
Let's move on, okay. Jim, are you keeping track of what we need as far as the, the climate for, for the-
I have two items listed.
Okay.
And that is, uh, add the abutter lot locations across Pond Street.
Yeah.
Well, no, it, it, put it as to, to identify all abutters-
All the butters.
-on the plan. All the abutters on the abutters list to, to be identified on the plan. And we'll be checking-
Okay, so it's how identify all the abutter lots on the plan. And to, um, check the abutters list for correctness.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
A- a- and also there's another item is, well, it's either to, uh, reshape lot five six six two, or to erase that, uh, dashed line in, in the middle of the lot. The, the preference is to reshape, but Frank's right, that, that wider entrance into the rest of that lot. Reshaping it will get rid of the- Yes, yep.
When you're through, Jim, when you just read them off, so we can, we're all in agreement, please.
Okay, so identify all the abutter lot locations on the plan, check the abutter list for correctness, and either reshape lot five dash six dash two, or-
Two sixes, five six six two.
Or, um, erase the line at the narrowest spot of the lot.
Is our members happy with that, what we need for next month? Someone wanna make a, uh-
Make a motion to, to, to move this application to public hearing on May 1st.
May 1st, right. Thank you, we'll see you May 1st.
Thank you. Oh, wait.
Second, um-
Yes, I need a second on that.
Second.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Ms. Redden?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
And Mr. Kozak?
Aye. Mr. Anderson, you wanted, just go ahead.
You know, being the landowner and so forth, I'd just like to ask if there is any questions that anyone might have, because you've been asking, you know, Jim, about the particulars of this, but I wanted to have you understand what I've been trying to do and the situation that I've been put in by just trying to manicure this property for the last 35 years and been trying to do the best thing that I can for the town. As you've all seen, uh, we had a for sale sign out in front of the property for about six to seven weeks now, and we've had an overwhelming response to all of the overwhelming response of interest with this property. And have it being that it's close to 25 acres minus the existing house right now. What has come to fruition is full price offers for a type of housing that is, uh, one big company out of Andover, another big company out of Charleston, and another big company out of Plymouth. And these companies are coming under per order of the governor. Uh, they're all looking for workforce housing. And evidently somehow, whatever is going on with a lot of hard work, which they said that they don't really care about, is that they're going to put 150 single-family homes for rent only and impact it. Now, these were offers that were for me to go away, and I said, well, you know, my home is, I, I cherish my home, and it's a beautiful place, and I said, it's gonna destroy my value of my home. So the next thing they said was, well, we'll buy your home too, you just go away. I said, well, we have rules and regulations in this town for sewage treatment and all of that. They said, don't worry, we have a plan and it's in the process. I was, they sent out affidavits to me to- I was, they sent out affidavits to me to sign that I would not disclose any of this. I was not to talk about what they were going to do. I was not, you know, and, and here's your money. Well, neither my wife Ellis and I really would ever want that to happen. Because if you think about how many kids are in the school system right now, and if you had two kids per home. If this came into reality, which, you know, we're all sitting here saying it could never happen, it could never happen. But if somebody's willing to spend that amount of money to make it not happen, something's up. So I've lived in town here since nineteen seventy-eight. I bought the house on the corner and restored that and ran my business from here. And I was on the planning board for seventeen years and I became a part of the community and my wife did as well. So the alternative is for, I myself in my career built over three hundred homes. And we just said, why don't we try to do the best we can for what this town would, could really use? So I want to say it was twenty-five years ago when they were, when the Peaslee land got subdivided and up on the hill. We paid the contractor at the time two hundred thousand dollars to connect that road, which created overlook. So that we could enter into the back of the property. So I, all of my, the residents, my neighbors, we've all, you know. Well, you've seen me, Frank, I plow them all out, I do everything. And, you know, all these people mean something to my wife and I. So the thought we had was that the field, when you drive by the house, the field that you're viewing. Is the field that we're in talking about, just putting two houses in. And they would sit way back off the road and to create sort of a village appearance of just a nice community. When you talked about the road, Jack, you know, it's, the thing that I was trying to do was to minimize the impact coming in off of, off of Pond Street. I mean, we have enough frontage for one anyway. And, you know, but just that other one sitting off to the side beyond, I thought would be a really tasteful look. All of the homes that we're going to be building are going to be designed by some of the best designers around. It's not going to be low income. We're doing the best that we can, you know, today. Any house seems to be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it's crazy. But with the topographical abilities that we have out in the backland, we're going to have a wonderful group of houses. Nothing is going to be sitting at the same elevation other than the drive, the road itself. And we'll be able to access those homes and some of them way up in behind, and the soil quality is fantastic out there. So I just want you to understand that, I'm sorry, I have throat problems today. The total intent is to minimize the impact on the immediate visible. With the road that we had put in is already there out back or the access to the road. And I didn't, I'm not selling out. I'm not going to just take the money and run. And I've, some of my friends and mentors said, what are you, crazy? Just get the hell out, take the money and run, you're good, go. And here I am before you, and I'm going to be before the next board, I'll plead the same case. All as we want to do is provide a good quality home and try to change the atmosphere of Newton a little bit. To hopefully begin to bring it into the, you know, where it should go. So if you have any questions, please ask. I mean, I know I don't have to go this far with you at this meeting, but I just want you to understand what our heart, our drive and our intention is. I, we have no intentions of selling it out to any developer that's going to just pepper this thing or do whatever they're going to do. And so most of these lots, five, there's a five acre, seven acre, three acre. Acre and two acres, two point two, there's all different sizes, so, which will allow us to have different pricing for individuals. If someone's looking for a place to put a horse, whatever, they'll have the land to do it. So anyway, that's my case, I plead my case. So if you please ask any question you want.
Good backup. That was good.
I think in terms of the questions, at next month's meeting, when we discuss the merits of the application, there'll be more questions at that time.
I'm all for it, but I just, you know, I think that it, you know. I just couldn't put a road that's going to come out and hit my across the street neighbor's house. A driveway is a driveway is a driveway, you know, and, but you start putting roads and that's a real problem for me. So we're just trying to keep the atmosphere of what is happening right now in town.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
This my coffee?
No, he took your, no, he took your coffee.
We have another.
He's going to have to give you one more.
Yeah, he's going to have.
Yeah, that's right. Let's go to. And next we have the second preliminary meeting for Zachary Standing. Jim, would you read the application request, please?
Zachary Standing and Bailey Ambrose of Five Tanglewood Drive are requesting relief from section fifteen point three. Location on the lot, in this case, a side yard setback for a garage. Lot is referenced as tax map six, block ten, lot of eleven. Yeah, that's inside.
Hi.
Hi, how's everyone doing?
Introduce yourself, your name, please.
My name's Bailey Ambrose and this is my husband Zach Standing. Thanks for being here.
Kind of give us an overview of, as you can see on a preliminary here, and we don't try not to go too deep, sometimes we do. It's just kind of an overlook and the thing is that if we need information from you that we're missing, that's what a preliminary meeting is all about, to make sure that, you know. So go right ahead, you have the podium.
So we are just requesting from the board a variance for our property line due to the unique topography of our specific plot. We're located pretty much at the top. Top of Blueberry Hill Development, which is now known as Tanglewood Drive. And due to the fact that our front door is west facing and all of our neighbors are like just a little bit more crooked. The way the Tricketts plot at plot thirty-one, or excuse me, I'm thirty-one, they're thirty, we have the fence line. We're asking to, we have to put the garage close to their fence. So right now, the zoning boards says twenty-five feet for a variance. We're asking for a fifteen-foot variance. Due to the fact that where our leach field is in our driveway, and so it lines up with the house. So it could be aesthetic for the neighborhood. We don't want it like crooked for anybody.
In the right side of our property, if you look at the map, that's a hill right there. So we can't really put it on the right side, our driveway is on the left side. And the only way to make it straight with our driveway is to pretty much get that there.
I just want to correct, Ms. Ambrose is not saying that her neighbors are crooked.
No, my neighbors are lovely. Love our neighbors, we love our community.
Did we get an butters list?
Is it a butters, is the butters list?
The butters list is on.
It's right here.
However, like the last plan, only one butter lot is shown.
We have a map of all of them.
Now, Tanglewood, is that, if I'm going up the road, is that on the left-hand side up on the ridge?
So it's the end of Thornel, that sharp corner that easily crossing there.
Okay.
And so if you come to that corner, it's right on the right right there.
Okay.
Right, right.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions?
Can I see that about a less section now? Maybe that'll.
We're thirty-one and so the garage would be like right.
I think it would be helpful if he gave us every part of the application, that layout of the butters.
I did submit that.
However, I was expecting the plan to have most of that information on it.
We're missing a butters. You said you're thirty-one. Eighteen and nineteen are butters. I don't see them over.
Oh, yeah, there are eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, I'm just pulling it off real quick.
I think there are seven, yeah.
Eighteen and nineteen.
It's only going to be ten.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Twenty seventeen, so then it would be six.
We need them on the plan.
Excuse me.
Should show all these, all these numbers.
He's trying to make notes for.
This does get recorded and sometimes, sometimes people do watch them on YouTube.
We need to get another map showing the whole property, pretty much this map on the.
Who was just here, yes.
Where the garage is growing here, is there, is there a butter to that left?
Yes.
Yes, so is it the Tricketts plot thirty?
It would be very helpful to me if I had some idea of where their structures are. The house, whatever else they've got in that area of the lot line.
I was going to say, I, Mr. Chair, I did go by, I don't know that I took pictures. But if you, if you do a drive-by, a site walk would be amazing. They're terraced, the topography of their land, there is no way you could put it to the other side of the property or in the front, near the chicken coop maybe. But the, I know, I'm only kidding, but the left side where these butters are, it's terraced. And there is really no other place to put this garage. It helped me tremendously doing a drive-by.
I think it's worth it for a walkthrough for the members.
You could, or I could go take pictures and send them to you, whatever you think.
People, what do you think?
There's enough information for me on these plans.
Yeah.
There's enough information when they get corrected.
Yeah, to show the butters.
Like you said, it should show the other houses that are right next to them.
The other thing that I would like to see on the plan are, you say, one of the reasons why you need to put it there is because of your leach field. But your leach field is not shown.
Yeah, so the problem with the leach field, there's, since our house is so old that we, there's no actual.
History.
History part.
Yep.
When we put the pool in, we had it like a guy's scope. Paid for a guy's come scope it, so it's pretty much, the leach field is pretty much where the septic tank is, it says. Because our septic tank is actually underneath our deck. And the leach field, that's pretty much where the leach field is.
Yeah, even though you've got a great lot, there's really very limited space.
For me, looking at the plan, I'm, without seeing the topography, I don't see why you couldn't just move it closer to your deck.
Because that's partly where, when we had the septic company come out and they staked it, we built a wrong wall to support that leach field.
Like a retaining wall?
Yeah, like a retaining wall.
Again, that, that would be helpful to be able to see where it is.
Can I approach? So if you look at this faded line, that's where that wrong wall goes.
Oh, yeah.
And when we had the septic company come out, they staked us pretty much all to here. So if we did move it closer, I'm afraid it would be a budding art.
There's also the driveway, Roger.
Could I suggest, only because I know the property, might be best if you were to actually view it.
I'm muddled up for viewers, but anybody would like to, Trish?
I've already done it, so I'm good.
Roger, you think it would help if we went over?
I've been on several sightwalks, I usually, usually learn a lot when I'm doing them.
Ms. Reddick?
Sure, I can watch.
These new members are great.
Besides that, it's not that far from my house.
That's right.
Well, would we like to pick a time or Roger and?
Could I suggest, you know, Thursday or Friday of this week? Because tomorrow, the weather's supposed to be nasty and.
Next week's going to be six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be a lot nicer.
Yes, okay. People want to pick a time and a date?
What kind of days are good for you?
As long as it's fairly early in the morning, we won't be there more than an hour or so.
Oh, right.
A Tuesday or a Thursday is great for me. Next Monday, I'm really up north looking at the eclipse, so I may never return.
Right, right.
The eleventh is not good for me. That's it. But.
Wednesday's not good for me in the morning.
How about, you said you like Tuesdays?
Tuesday, Thursdays, yes.
Tuesday morning.
I mean.
Tuesday morning.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday mornings sound good.
What's that date?
Are we talking about the ninth? Are we talking about the sixteenth?
That, I won't be able to do it that Tuesday, I'll be coming back.
Right, yeah, so how about the Tuesday after, the sixteenth?
The sixteenth, the following Tuesday? I gotta take the doctor's, my wife's got a doctor's appointment, I gotta bring the doctor for a doctor's appointment.
The eighteenth, the Thursday.
That sounds good to me.
Eighteenth?
How about the rest of the board?
I have Homeland Security that day, but I don't need to go. I've got Homeland Security meetings that day.
And you want to pick a time? What is convenient for you?
Anytime after nine. Second, drop the kids off at eight-thirty. Pick one up at eleven, back at eleven-ten, pick up the other at three.
How many?
Are you going? You need to go.
Nine AM? Is nine AM convenient or is it? Roger? Ms. Reddick?
Yep.
Ms. White?
Sounds okay.
Now, I have to turn on.
Okay.
My microphone.
Sounds okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. White.
Ms. White, we plan to walk through on April eighteenth.
Okay, I'm not sure whether I can make it, but I got the, I got it right, I wrote it down for nine o'clock. Yes, thank you.
You wrote down at nine o'clock? Okay, fine, nine o'clock, fine with everybody who's going?
That actually has to be a motion, I will.
Okay.
Post it.
All right.
Make a motion that we have a site walk at Five Tanglewood on April eighteenth at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
I'll second. Second.
Do preliminary count, Jim, please?
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
This is for the site walk.
Site walk, yep.
Ms. Reddick?
Yes.
Mr. Cozak?
Yes. Is there anything else that we need from the application for, for next month's?
If we identify all of that, other than the things that, that.
That we've talked about.
Yeah, and some of, some of it will also should become clearer when I.
Right.
Go walk around the yard.
Isn't that a butter list that map? Did, did Mr. LaValle give you that in a big?
No, she went to the courthouse.
Okay. Ah, okay.
So the numbers probably don't match up to what he has.
Wait, are you asking about this? This is the original plot plan for the whole neighborhood.
Yep.
And then Mr. LaValle provided this.
Okay.
So do you want a new plan showing all the butters on it?
Yes.
All, all the ones that are here should be on the plan.
Yeah.
So LaValle has a plot plan for their property, when they put the fence in, he did it.
Okay.
Should we try to get that? Because that's really the whole property, really, that would be.
Yeah, that, 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 that's, that's the ones I'm concerned about. The, the people on the other side are.
They're a hundred percent spoiled.
Yeah, the Triquettes are like full support. They're like, please put up a garage. We don't want to see your kids.
The, the abutters have no issue with your, that's, that's a positive.
Yeah, no, we're so lucky. Everybody's awesome.
So that would help a lot to get that plot plan for them.
Yes.
And then trying to further review all the butters around it. We can do that.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Someone like a major motion that we bring this over for.
They get to public hearing.
To the public hearing on May, was it May first?
Moved.
May second.
Well, wasn't Jim?
No, was it Mr. Gibbs the second?
Second.
Ms. Reddick?
Oh, Ms. Reddick. Okay, Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Ms. Reddick?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
And Mr. Cozak?
Aye.
That's your news.
And we will see you May first.
Well, actually, no, we'll, we'll, we'll see them on the. The eighteenth at, at their property.
Should, should we ask for a telephone number in case something happens? I don't want to scare the young lady going over.
Because I have a telephone number.
It's on the application.
Okay, it is, yeah. Yeah, we might, we might call first just to make sure that, you know, we're not baiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you too.
Acceptance of the minutes of three, six, twenty-four.
Two dash seven, twenty-four.
I don't have a copy of those. Oh, okay.
Except the, the revised minutes of March sixth with the one fix of fixing the footnotes.
And the other is the minutes of two, seven.
You want one all in one, so make a motion to also accept the, the minutes of February seventh. As long as the, the correction was made.
I know, with corrections, we haven't seen, right, and you know what those corrections are?
On, 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 on the February one, the only, the only correction from the graph that we received was my, my name was left off of one of the.
Okay.
One of the votes.
I knew it was something, okay. Okay.
So that's both of them.
Second?
Mr. Paul, Jim?
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
So is this for both months? So March got corrected? Because I didn't see that. All I have is the wrong one.
It's, it's in the footnote, there's a Scrivener's error.
That's the only. All the other things he corrected.
You took my name off because I wasn't here that night.
On March sixth.
On, right, on the sixth.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Ms. Reddick?
Aye.
Mr. Cozak?
Aye. Manifest, Jim? The manifest, the Board of Adjustments will adjourn at eight PM.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, Ms. White. I'd already lied, I just said, thank you to her.